...the town Nantucket Board of Appeals. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Reneged amended.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay, motions have been made in second. Any further discussion? No, all is in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The minutes from April tenth. No. Anybody want to make any changes? Comments? Anything above? Or a motion? Okay. At least you didn't have a chance to read them. I'm going to admit to not having a chance to read them either. So why don't we push those over to the next meeting? Okay? All right. So will somebody? Do we need a motion for that? No. No. Okay. So we're on to old business. The first, one, two, three, four, five are continued. And we don't have to take any action on those continuances. Correct? So now we're down to sixty-seven dash eighty-four. Robert D. Lang, trustee of the Lang Family Nominee Trust. Redock Ryder Road. Where the applicant? Anybody here for this one?
This is more of a staff submission.
Staff submission?
Well, it's submitted by Mr. Lang, but the staff can represent him because it is a fairly, more of a formality for the appeal.
Well, are you going to then represent him?
I'm happy to do that.
Please do.
As you see in your staff report, this applicant has purchased the property from a tenant by a fire owner who supplied and was rented at the building in nineteen eighty-four. At the time zoning was, I believe, RC.
It's RC two.
RC two, and it has since been changed so that Mr., the current owner, Mr. Lang, would like to designate the current uses of duplex which he was allowed to do by right in the current zone.
Okay. Is any, anybody out in the audience want to talk about this one? No. Okay. Board members, what do we think?
Wait a minute, who's sitting on this? You guys say?
Karen, you sitting?
You on the set?
Uh, will this continue before?
No.
No, this is no longer matter, nineteen eighty-four. He's just.
Okay. So the five, so now, now we're good. Michael's gone. Okay. So it's just a function of the zoning has changed. They can do it a matter of right, but I don't want to get rid of the paperwork.
Don't have an issue with it?
Me either. Okay. Will somebody make that motion?
I'll make that motion. It's due.
Okay. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any further discussion? No. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on to new business. Okay. The first one is continued without opening. So we're at twenty-four fourteen. Johnny Morrison. Jeffrey Morrison. Rossberg, I'm having trouble reading today. Seven Judith Chase Lane. Where the applicant? Is the applicant's attorney here?
He's here. Maybe we can push it.
Okay.
A lot of people who've gotten in trouble have come here.
I see that.
To speak about it, so maybe we can push it until they arrive. I have sent him a message too. Or he may have assumed that, he says he'll be here in five minutes.
Okay.
Maybe we can open the next line?
We can do that. Okay. So we're skipping twenty-seven fourteen. That's been, or do we have to take action? No, that's being withdrawn, withdrawn without prejudice?
Yes. You have to go through and approve that.
Yeah. So anyway, so twenty-seven fourteen. Richard Glidden, trustee, Seven Arrow Realty Trust. As the owner, Sean O'Callaghan as the applicant. Seven Arrow Head Drive. Will somebody make a motion to withdraw this application without prejudice?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Mark, thank you. Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? Anybody in the audience come to speak about this one? No. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So now we are on to twenty-eight dash fourteen. Carol R. Bodich and James Bodich as trustees.
I'm here. Not for that, but I'm here for the next one. I guess you wanted to do that one.
Okay. Because Mr. Reed isn't here for this one. Okay. Let's send a memo to their office. Twenty-nine dash fourteen.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I did not hear the woman, but she said on that particular situation, and that's what reached out here.
Yeah. Okay. My bad. I apologize. The applicant's attorney isn't here right now, so we're just going to skip them for now, but we'll be coming back to that.
I thought they were, the lawyer was going to represent that to you, Mr. Reed.
He is. He's not here right this minute.
Uh-huh. It's like he was going to come back.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
I'm having a very difficult time.
Sorry. I'll try to speak up. Okay. So it appears we are now at twenty-nine dash fourteen. Nantucket Broad Street LLC, twenty-one Broad Street. Where the applicant? Who is here?
Correct. Is there a microphone I'm supposed to speak into?
I guess you could speak if that one's live.
Michael, can you sit on this?
You shouldn't sit on this?
I don't, I really shouldn't.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So this is the board. Oh, wait a minute. I'm not sitting on this either. I forgot. I'm totally out of order. So, Mark.
Mark.
So Lisa, you take over?
Sure.
Okay. For the applicant, Sarah?
Yep. Sarah Alger for the applicant. We are requesting a modification of the condition against exterior construction for the period Memorial Day through Labor Day, which was a condition of the original approval. We would like the ability to construct into March, I mean into June. We've been experiencing significant delays primarily due to the town's construction project on Broad Street. For those of you who are here this winter, I think you saw that Broad Street in large measure was shut down for large periods over the course of the winter, and that significantly delayed us. In addition, the weather conditions weren't exactly helpful. Both things being outside of our control. I think we're reasonably close to being finished. Scott Anderson, who's the contractor, is here and can answer any questions you might have about what exactly remains to be done. But we think that in the interests of, you know, downtown looking nice and also our own interest, of course, in getting the, in at least finish from the exterior and potentially open for the portion of the summer, we would like the ability to work into June. We understand that Memorial Day weekend is a very busy period, and I think I saw in the staff report a suggestion that we stop for a couple of days on either side of that and during that weekend, and I think that's completely reasonable. We would not want to work past a day, a date in June, whatever the board feels is reasonable. But we'd like to have at least a couple of weeks to try to wrap up what we have to do on the exterior.
Okay.
I guess I should add, that's not out of line with other decisions, not necessarily made by this board, but I know the planning board has looked at this prohibition on other cases, on a case-by-case basis. I think they changed their policy to be a date in late June. I know that something this board's kind of been struggling with, and you haven't come to a decision yet on what dates you think are reasonable, but I think under the circumstances, particularly given that town construction project, it's not unreasonable.
Okay. Does anybody from the board have any questions? At this point, you want to hear from Scott Anderson about what's left to be done and what's going to be taking place, or?
Yeah. He has a good idea. Can you give us a little?
Hi, everyone. Scott Anderson. The remaining work, all the heavy construction is complete. There will be no more heavy equipment machines, no more large trucks, no more concrete trucks after, I think, next week. So we'll be on the fifteenth, and that'll be the end of those guys. We're delivering sheet rock today, so on and so forth. That ends on Saturday. The work that should be remaining is just basically painting after the first of June. Any other construction as far as compressors, nail guns, and stuff like that will be ended, I'm going to say, in the first week of June, outside. We will continue to work on the inside with interior trim, so on and so forth, but other than that, we should be done. Including all the sheet rock and stuff, which makes an extremely large amount of noise with the screw guns and stuff, will be completed, I'm going to say, by June first as well. Other than that, I don't think that all it's, and we're also trying to get all the landscaping done and get, and totally get the sidewalk put back together and everything else before Memorial Day, as well as the driveway. So after this weekend, I think we have one more tree we're taking down for the neighbors on Saturday morning, and then that's, that'll be the end of the large noise that we're going to have for the rest of the project. So it'll be just a matter of paintbrushes on the outside after that. Some light, light sanding after June first.
How do you guys deal with parking? Just curious for all the crews. Where do they park?
Well, we've been parking on Broad Street and every, any place that we can. As you all know, there's, movies been in town, and parking has been extremely difficult everywhere, so we're actually trying to carpool the best we can. I know when I did Chestnut, Chestnut Street last year, we were jockeying guys back and forth and moving cars around to avoid ticketing, and we still ended up paying quite a big number in tickets for parking downtown, unfortunately. We're willing to do basically whatever you ask. If you want to limit our hours as far as the painters go, from, say, ten to four or something like that, we're willing to do that, or whatever you can see. But we did have a tough winter. We received our permit a little bit later than we expected, and that is basically it. And like I said, we're at the mercy of the board to grant us this extra time, and we can certainly live with some time constraints as far as hours go for exterior work.
Any other questions from the board? Is there anybody in the audience that's, is here to speak?
I'll speak.
Please just state your name.
Yes. Don Culp from Brotherhood Pizza Hut next door. Obviously, I want to, you know, be a great neighbor, you know, to do business going in next door to us, and obviously go out and support us in the long run, but at the same time, you guys have struggled throughout the winter, and so we, the same thing, you know, Broad Street being all torn up, construction going on next door, the big hole from the tree that was left open for weeks on end. You know, we've struggled through the winter, and I just don't want to see us continuing the struggle. At the same time, I'm trying to be a good neighbor, you know, I sincerely hope that those are honest dates of doing now being done, because right now, I'm planning on opening the patio next week, and right now, it's super loud with nail guns, with music playing, with almost all the guys yelling, and that's got to, that's got to speed.
Well, and I'll tell you what I'll do is I'll give you my phone number. If you have any problems, you can call me, and we'll take care of it right away. We did the same thing on Seventy-sixth Main Street last year with the neighbors. We went around and made time as a problem, just took care of it right away, when we had to extend a little bit, little bit of climbing there.
And I totally understand that it's not going to help us though, to have in the law open building that's being painted, sitting there all summer, but at the same time, is it going to help you that much more with scaffolding here? You know, is that going to be the scaff-
That's, that's, all that scaffolding should be down, I'm going to say, by the end of next week.
So the front facade will be done?
By, probably by June first or June second, among those lines.
The scaffolding will be down? Excuse me, sorry.
The scaffolding on, the, all the, all of the pipe staging is already down.
Okay.
On, in the front of the building. And we just have scaffolding up along the side of the building now, where we're doing some corbels and-
What really will be going on for those three or four weeks in June?
Basically, just the painting on the outside.
And, uh, the-
No, in some, in a little bit of landscaping. So we might just have some, some portions of the driveway to do, but we intend, and I know I spoke to Dale, he's coming this week to replant a tree out there, and he's, and we're going to finish up the sidewalk by the end of next week, so we'll, we'll be clean, clear out of there, as far as heavy construction.
All the corners on my side will all be done?
All be done, complete.
So essentially, you're just doing ladder painting?
Ladder painting from, from June first, uh, yeah.
If, if, if that's truly the extent of it, then honestly, I don't have any issue with it.
Great. Thank you very much. And like I said, I'll, I'll come over and see you this afternoon, give you my number. If there, if there is any problems, we'll definitely take care of them for you. Okay? Thank you very much.
Any, anybody else in the audience?
Mary Harper. For properties to actually, or similar to that, if you have an opportunity to meet it.
Yeah.
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 Thank you. Does anybody have any comments? Thoughts?
I'll chime in.
I will too.
I think the reason why I always stand behind Memorial Day personally, I don't know how the other members feel, is because the focus downtown, I mean sidewalks, everything, it's all summer, straight through, and I've always stood behind making sure that we have that date from Memorial Day to Labor Day for this exact reason. I know the builder might have the intentions of finishing up when he's supposed to and all that, and maybe it will be painting, but I've just seen too many people abuse this in the past. I'm not saying you will, but I do feel for the neighbors in the area, and I stand behind my, my Memorial Day to Labor Day. This is my personal.
Mark?
I would be a little bit more flexible based on the fifty-six Center Street project where they had a fire just before opening last year. There are circumstances beyond the control of the builder that has certainly impacted his job. I don't care about the nature of the weather. That's what everybody deals with. But the fact that there was so much work being done on the sewers and the roadwork on that street, it was just utter chaos, that if we could agree, potentially, I'm just putting this out on the table, that they shut down Thursday afternoon prior to Memorial Day, and don't start again until Wednesday, or possibly Tuesday, if negotiable, for that time period, we have been looking at the period of time between that as somewhat more benign than the, the area, but certainly, the closer to June one, the better I would feel comfortable about it. Going beyond that, just, you know, everybody's got a stake in what happens for the three months of the summer downtown.
Right.
There's a big stake there, and everybody's going to be impacted beyond that point. So we have to be clear that we're going to stick to our guns in some fashion, but I'm willing to concede some time beyond Memorial Day to help them out and, and clean it up and make it look presentable.
And we to, we totally understand everybody has a stake in it, as well as Mr. Persilay too. He has a stake, big stake in it too, with not having that place rented and finished as well. And I think it helps the town out. We get more beds, we get more income in here, we get more people there, they spend more money. Um, you know, I, I think it's good for everyone.
And, and keep in mind that we, we don't control what goes on inside the building. We have no control over that other than a noise component, so they can continue to do all the work that they want inside, structure, but it's really the exterior that we need, we need some real guarantees that this is going to, you know, get done.
I understand.
June one's, I don't even know what day June one is. Can you tell me what day, actual day it is?
It's Monday.
Sunday.
Sunday.
It's a Sunday?
The second is Monday.
Um, I'm also, would, would hope that you would have some hours if we agree that Sunday is a workday for you, that hours start a little bit later and end a little bit earlier on that side. And I'm not really agreeable to Sundays, but some other people might be.
So-
I think that was on the table as part of your requirement.
We don't, we're probably not going to need Sundays anyway, Mark.
Right.
Basically, we're hoping to be done by the fifteenth, but honestly, but if we get a couple of rain days, I don't want to be told that I can't work outside, and we may have a fence to put up or something like that, but we're willing to start at ten o'clock and quit at four, if, if that helps our neighbors and, and helps the board.
Open to some negotiation with the neighbors here today.
Yeah.
We can find an agreeable solution to getting you to a point where it looks like it's finished on the outside and then not a project that just died for lack of trying.
Exactly. Okay. Lisa?
Oh. Go ahead.
Hi, Lucy Dillon. I'm a New Round resident downtown. As you know, that this winter, it's been particularly disruptive, and in the agenda and the direction of the morning extension that we're doing, my concern is that if the board is going to be doing extensions, that perhaps they should consider these are radio noise or music free zones. A lot of these guys, I don't know if they've suffered from hearing loss, or-
What?
-try to out blast each other, but I, I think that my suggestion is that if the extension department, that it should be radio free zones.
We can certainly do no radios. Absolutely.
Where will you be on Memorial Day?
Not there. I've already talked to the-
No, where will you, where will the-
Oh, the, the building be?
Yeah.
We should be, all the construction and most of the front painted and so on and so forth, but no scaffolding in the front, no scaffolding, should be all done on the backside, so it'll be ladders only. Basically, we'll clean that place right up before Memorial.
So the, the sidewalk's done?
Sidewalk will be done.
So I guess my question is, what does two, what, what does two or three weeks make, what does make to you?
Basically, in the back, we'll be, we'll be working. Like I said, we have our, our deck to do, we have some fencing, fencing to do, so on and so forth.
Why can't you do that after Labor Day?
We can do that after Labor Day. Oh, I mean, I'm sorry. I mean, before, we won't get our CO if we don't have that fencing stuff up, because it'd be part of the HDC approval.
I'm really concerned about allowing a project in the heart of downtown to be on Memorial Day. I have a really hard time with it. And you and I had a brief discussion last year about a contractor who, I was super ticked off that because they had gone over and there was no co-op, there was, I was told that there's nothing I can do from the building department, zoning enforcement. So I'm very apprehensive about voting in favor of an extension, even with-
After Memorial Day.
Even with, and, you know, there's another one on here that I might vote to give an extension, but it's not the heart of downtown downtown.
I understand.
Right. I, I think the biggest issue, and we have been struggling, to Sarah's point, about the whole issue of more torrents on exterior work, but I think in the Old Historic District, I think everybody feels pretty strongly, or at least the Commercial District of downtown, people feel pretty strongly that it's, it's necessary.
Well, I'm just thinking back to the Dreamland, for example. When they needed an extension, they were extended till June, not by this board, but by the planning board. I think there's the thought that, yes, Memorial Day is important, we'll stop for that. There's a bit of a lull those first week, week and a half of June. I'm not sure that they're as critical as the latter weeks of June. Certainly July, August, and that first week of September are, are very important. But we'd actually, we're, we're allowed to work through Labor Day and through Memorial Day, so we'd actually be giving up days, a few days on either side. Well, not on either side, but on the days leading up, if we agreed to stop. Right now, we could go right through Monday, so we, we would be giving up potentially Wednesday through, in it, in exchange for those extra days in June. I don't know.
So from now on, we have to put dates in.
Right. Well, I don't know. I mean, those are dates, Memorial Day to Labor Day are-
Right. No, now we're going to have to start putting in dates, specific dates, not just Memorial Day, because, you know, you picked up on something that we've made a mistake on.
I don't know if it was a mistake.
Oh, yeah, sure did. Much less than giving date specific. May twenty-sixth or whatever.
Well, it should obviously be the Friday before Memorial Day, because Memorial Day moves, it's particularly early this year.
That's what I was going to say.
Right. It is particularly early this year.
Which is a little bit hard.
That's, that's the other difficulty.
I mean, if, what your premise is that there's a lull between Memorial Day and the fifteenth of June, two people here who are butters and are directly impacted and don't do business here, does your business drop off that June one to fifteen kind of thing, so that the impact would be minimal?
I, I pretty seriously mentioned my meeting in June, and my concern is that I can't release the noise level of the people that are working in the back all the time unless
I mean, if what your premise is that there's a lull between Memorial Day and the fifteenth of June, two people here who are butters and are directly impacted and don't do business here, does your business drop off that June one to fifteen kind of thing so that the impact would be minimal?
I personally mentioned my experience in June. And my concern is that I can't release the noise level of the people that are working in the back all the time unless I get a phone call from a tenant that's not happy at my house. So, you know, they go back through stock and calling at work and having to call. I don't have a lot of examples that, just the construction noise or even if you're working with any of the landscapers, that's not going to all be constantly filtering over onto my property. Realistic. Because I already know, I lived there for the last six months, and I know the noise level is. And, you know, there is that setback. But in general, my apartment is highly affected by anything that's going on on the outside of ours.
God?
I'm concerned I won't be able to constantly, you know, if there's a big job, I can't come in there and do a big job. Because you made it free, but there's going to be all the noise that goes along the path. And I'm glad that the construction hasn't been done because I've had three falling onto my yard, my garden everywhere for months. And I want to clean it up. And my tenants will be using that patio.
How's the business at the Brotherhood do the first two weeks in June? Is that a soft spot or?
It is quieter.
Pardon me?
It is a little quieter. And I would prefer, I would prefer to see the place next door entirely cleaned up by the Memorial Day as opposed to have it in unfinished state throughout the entire site.
How's it look now?
Not great.
I mean, is it just unpainted or?
It's my building too. So the whole, both, both buildings are in pretty good.
Is there debris still around or is it?
We're basically all done with the heavy construction. So we have a little shingling left to do, a little roofing left to do. But we'll be, like I said, we'll be done with that, I'm hoping, before the fifteenth, definitely before the first, definitely before Memorial Day.
I feel like we're forgetting that, I mean, just because Memorial Day is really early this year. And we have, after Memorial Day, we have a week before June starts. So June fifteenth is really, you know, the fifteen days in June and then that week before. So I, I might be willing to entertain, you know, an extension that gives you that week where, you know, because Memorial Day is so early. But, you know, June fifteenth, that's really three more weeks. That's a lot.
Right, we don't need to go that long.
And I get, so maybe you don't give up those couple of days that you would have had around Memorial Day, like, you know, don't work on Memorial Day and maybe the Sunday and Saturday, like the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, whatever, and then have that week, the Tuesday. And then you would have that whole week.
Yeah, both kind of days.
Yeah, you'd have a whole week. And that sort of is before, you know, June is, June isn't until...
The Monday.
Monday, June second.
June second.
June second, Monday. So I might, I feel like that's, because I feel like when we say Memorial Day, in our heads, we're really thinking like the end of May, or I am in May.
I think this is just a particularly difficult one because it's right in the center of town.
Yeah. I mean, I drove by there today and it wasn't, it wasn't bad, you know. I mean, of course, it would be better if it was all painted and whatever. But, you know, I don't think that it's going to, you know, besides your business, I don't think it's really going to affect, you know, unfortunate if it sits unpainted all summer or whatever. But I don't think it's really going to affect.
Well, it impacts the businesses in town to a certain, to a...
Right, because you don't have people...
Because you don't have the people living there and you don't have the people walking over and eating at the restaurants or shopping at the stores and...
Right, but, but this, but this extension isn't going to affect that. I mean, you still have the whole inside and everything else to do, right?
Yeah, what are you hoping to open?
We plan to do the open July fifteenth.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Susan? So this is for, this is to precipitate the opening and not...
Yeah, no, I got it. I mean...
Right, it's to get this, it's to get this project wrapped up on the outside and also to allow us to finish it.
But you can't open without the...
We can't open without some of these elements being done. Now landscaping, you know, we can do ongoing landscaping throughout the, throughout the summer.
You should get the noisy landscaping.
But we should get the noisy stuff done.
All the brick cutting and things like that.
That, that will be done before June first.
You said before Memorial Day?
Well, it could be done before, yeah. Others than the fencing and stuff like that.
It seems to move a little bit.
All the brick cutting, no, all the brick cutting and all that stuff, all the heavy construction.
So it seems, so Scott, what I'm hearing from you a lot is like by June first or by Memorial Day, like you're going to get a lot of the stuff done. So I guess I'm unclear then, from June first to June fifteenth, what is it that you need to do? Because can, and I don't know the answer to this, can you, if it's only ladder painting...
Basically, that, basically, that's all.
Then is that the thing that we can, can you limit?
Ladder painting, no radios.
Like can we limit an extension to, can we limit the work that's allowed?
Yeah, I think so. I think we can limit anything.
Of course. I mean, there might be an electrician outside putting some lights on and stuff like that, but other than that.
It's just because it's just...
Very slippery spot.
It is because...
Somebody's got to police it and then you call them to police it and they don't show up. And when they do, they say, there was nobody there because it was noon and they're all at lunch. And it's just...
I do think that what they did on Center Street was successful because of the fire. We did give them an extension. I think that's that on that. And I don't think the neighbors, I mean, I never heard that there are complaints about it.
At least, I think the problem that I'm seeing at least is we're setting a precedent.
Well, I know.
And we've already had one attorney today reference the previous case, the Dreamland, where we did allow this.
And so...
No, we did not. The planning board did.
Planning board.
So that's not a...
So, but they're still referencing...
Right.
A case and saying, hey, you know, you guys did it for these people. How about you do it for these people? So...
It doesn't make going forward very difficult.
Makes it very difficult.
I just don't, I don't see the reason to give it on this one. I mean, if it's a fire, it was one thing. Now it's totally different. Planning board gave the other one. This one, I don't see it.
And you don't see the reason to go to June first and then cap it at that?
Yeah, I can see that.
Right, we did have, I mean, in fairness, we did have the construct, that, all that roadway construction that was exceptionally difficult.
But you could still travel down that road, right? I don't remember being blocked.
No, no, no.
I wasn't down there.
No, there were big periods of time when you couldn't.
Oh, you can access.
So you couldn't work on other parts of the, you couldn't work on any part of it?
Inside.
Well, we can work, but we couldn't get a material there, equipment there. There were, I think fifteen days when that road was basically closed roughly.
I'll make a motion. I move that it be amended so that work ends noon, one o'clock, one o'clock on Friday, May twenty-third. Work may resume eight AM on Tuesday, May twenty-seventh. Work ends until Labor Day.
No, June first, correct? Or whatever you're...
Work ends until Labor Day on Saturday, June seventh, at four PM.
Okay.
Okay? And you're able to work eight to five? Painting and landscaping only?
Planting.
Uh, painting, painting.
Painting and, like, softscapes landscaping is probably fine. Softscape, but no, no hardscaping.
No, no operation of any...
Saws.
Saws, drills, you know, what makes noise, guys? Help me out here.
Compressors.
Compressors.
And no radios, obviously.
No radios, no CDs, no cassette tapes, no eight-track tapes.
No iPods?
No iPod, unless the music is with earbuds.
Right, got it.
Sorry, but there's people, we have a lot of negative things on this and this...
No, I agree.
So if you have restaurants with a patio, I mean, you could have had a complete lunch on patio.
Yeah. I think quiet in town is good.
Sorry.
And I would just have said every...
That's, that's absolutely fine.
That's one of the things that I don't like is the parking.
Yeah, the parking.
You know, that you come up with a plan of parking. We can't, you know, but if you could just...
I wish there was something the town would do to help us with that. I mean, last year on Chestnut Street, you know, I got twenty, twenty trucks, thirty trucks there. There's no place for us to park anywhere downtown.
If they're doing, if they're doing, if they're doing painting, I mean, can't, can't they park?
At Jetty's Beach and we take one car.
Well, I asked if we could do that and they said, no, they don't want us down there either. Park down there. We've got to put ten trucks down there. C and C's taking up a lot of the parking.
Put it out down behind the A and P, Stop and Shop.
Where they did the ballet last year.
I think they're valeting.
They're valeting.
It was all that, during the day?
They've all put new gravel in down there so they're getting ready for Memorial Day.
Fifty dollars. Forty dollars.
Thank you, two spaces in my drawer.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Terry.
Okay, so should we just clarify? The, the motion was to end work at one PM on May twenty-third, resume eight AM Tuesday. No, you said May thirty. Didn't you have May twenty?
May twenty-third, yeah.
May twenty-third, resume eight AM, May twenty-seventh.
Correct.
And continue until June seventh, at four PM. I think is what you said, Saturday, June seventh. And that's the hours of operation, other than that Saturday, I guess, would be eight AM to five PM.
And no work on Sunday.
And no work on Sunday.
One Sunday, so no work on Sunday, June one.
And no music?
No, no.
Unless then earbuds.
Unless the earbuds.
And no equip, and no...
No.
Hand sanding and painting.
Yeah, hand sanding, no sanders, saws.
Okay, no electric.
Yeah. You can use chisels. Okay, so that's the motion. Is there a second?
I'll make that second.
Uh, motions are made and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? And motion carries.
Okay, thank you very much.
Scott, please, please work with everybody.
Yeah, if they're opposed. Karen, and actually, could you provide your cell phone number to Mary Parker as well?
She already has it.
Okay, and maybe the tenants, Mary. I would just give the cell phone number to a tenant so you can maybe talk directly.
They're not going to want to call the contractor.
No. Okay. Well, hopefully, hopefully, most of it will be done.
Call a contractor if possible.
I might, if I were agree.
If I wanted it fixed faster.
Yeah, exactly. I'm not going to be here for the next hearing. Is there a chance that this might continue?
There's always a chance. I may not be here too, who knows?
No, I'm actually...
I may not be reappointed.
You could lobby for that.
I may lobby for that.
You have one issue.
Anyway, did, did somebody?
Do you want to...
You'd be here in June?
Soon, so we may not, but...
Well, none of us knows.
No, I'm on a truck, so I'm not, I'm definitely...
What are we on?
Chase.
June and Chase, Maureen.
Oh, no, no, no.
We feel free. I don't think it's going to...
Well, you think it'll...
I even need to do it.
I think there's a lot of fact checking on. But either way, I'd be good.
It's up to you, Lisa.
Oh, I'll address it.
Okay, so we are at twenty-four fourteen. John Morrison, Jeff Morrison, Elizabeth Rosberg is trustees of the seven, J.C. Lane Trust, Seven Jews Chase Lane, where the applicant is steamed.
Steven Crowe, thank you, Mr. Karen. This application, as you remember last time, we continued it because there was a problem with the assessment list, that the assessment had not provided complete list under the statute because it's gone forward anyway because we're only required to use this list, even if it has a mistake. But as a courtesy to the butters, we renoted that a butter who was left out and, and delayed for a month. So what we have here is a relatively simple case and I hope you will be a relatively simple solution. Because this kind of states back to the seventeen forty saves, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it essentially sits nearly on the road. And it is at a very odd angle to the road because it creates the road by fifty or a hundred meters on that road actually. But it's, it's much older than, than the road. My client and a brother, my, my client or brother, two brothers and a sister, they inherited the property from their, their parents. And they would like to do something with the house to improve it. And the problems that they're having is that you need, it has essentially a failing foundation, a failing floor system, and other things that need a lot of work. It really needs to be jacked up, to be fixed. When they jack it up, they'd also like to move it over above two and a half feet so that they would then also subdivide the lot. This is a very unusual lot in town because it has essentially an open area that is large enough to be a subdivided A and R approval lot. The only thing holding us back from doing that, because it has enough frontage, it has enough lot area, it has enough ground cover, it has everything dimensionally that you're normally looking for. But the location of the house would create a setback, non-conformity, because drawing a line anyway under A and R approval would create a setback approachment into the side dirt setback as close as two point two feet where there's a five yard setback reform. Any other person could come in and cure that by moving their house. And frankly, we thought we could too. I've seen the HDC grant numerous permits to grant, to allow historic houses to be moved slightly for various reasons. And in fact, at the meeting, Donald Block, Ronald, that four that he could think of. The issue that we're having here is that this house has a relationship to the road that the HDC considers in, in and of itself to be historically important and sacrosanct, and they don't want it moved. And my client is willing to accommodate that. We originally suggested moving it a couple of feet perpendicular to the road, or parallel to the road. And then we said we would instead move it and then shift it back so that it didn't, so that the relationship didn't change. But the HDC declined, denied the application to move it at all. And so what we're dealing with now is that we have approved, we have appealed that decision to the Board of Selectmen. And in the interim, we discovered that we probably have what's called a constructive grant, which means that the HDC didn't require its denial within sixty days. And under that statute, under their statute, there probably is a constructive grant approval of the application. But rather than forcing the HDC to hand over the constructive grant, and rather than having to go through the appeal process and have their decision overturned, what we'd like to do is have some resolution that allows the house to be maintained in its current location, if that's possible. And there's two easy ways to do it. One of them would be to allow for variance for frontage averaging. And I don't know how familiar you are with that, but in the approval not required, in the subdivision process, if you have enough frontage to divide two lots, but you want to give more to one and less to the other, you're allowed to do that as long as you file a document that says that we've already split up this frontage in a, in a specific way so that you cannot then use that leftover frontage later. And it's commonly done when you have corners and, and circles and, and things like that in, in various kind of lots. It makes sense to not have the full amount attributed to each lot as long as you have the full amount for, for the total number of lots. And here, in order to be able to do that, we'd need to borrow approximately three feet from one lot to give it to the other lot in order to meet that. So we're looking for the variance of, of that frontage because there's a fifty foot minimum. So even though this lot has a hot, over a hundred and thirty-seven feet of frontage, where only fifty feet is needed for either side, in order to hit the fifty foot minimum is where we need the frontage because there's only, one, one of the lots would only have forty-six point nine. There's also requirements that the lot not get any narrower than fifty feet at its closest point. And here, if you draw a straight line to get around the house, you get as, you get as narrow as forty-four point two feet. So if we did frontage averaging to allow for the subdivision, you would have a lot that was conforming in its, in all ways except it would have this little cutout into it where we'd get as narrow as forty-four point two feet. The alternative way of doing it is to allow for the creation of a new non-conformity, which would allow for the correct amount of frontage at fifty feet, fifty foot per lot, and then have the lot line jog in closer to the house, which would create an approachment of as close as two point two feet. So I know that you don't like to grandparents, and I encourage you generally not to grandparents unless there's special situations. And here what we have is a house that the HDC is treating as extremely unusual in its location and creating a, a situation that is not applicable to other houses and not applicable in the area, and justifying treating this lot differently. And we're creating lots that would otherwise be dimensionally satisfactory, that would have the right amount of frontage, would have the right amount of ground cover, would have the right amount of lot area, and so on and so forth. The two choices would allow you to either create a lot that has a continuing non-conformity by the setback approachment, or no, no non-conformity except for the frontage averaging going forward. So you could choose either of those depending on which you, you favor. My client would favor the zoning average, the frontage averaging, because it would allow for the creation of a lot with no setback approachment. But either, either one would be fine. So what we have here is a situation where the historic significance of the house is preventing it from being moved in a way that is applied to almost no other structures on the entire island in a lot that is essentially otherwise subdivisible. The other thing I'd ask you to consider is that zoning is essentially supposed to protect neighbors from each other. You know, that's what we saw in the last case and that's what you see in all your other cases. Here, what you have is an interior lot line. So my client owns both sides. The negative impact of what, what's going on here is on land owned by the same person. So there's no impact on some of water or neighbor by allowing an approachment or allowing a non-conformity. It's, it's the same person, to the extent there's a change of ownership later. That person is, you know, buying full well, they know what they're, what they're getting. So here, I don't know that you need to apply the same standard as you would if you were, if you were thinking about whether or not you should allow for, for non-conformity against a third party of water. The other thing is that although the neighbors really, really want to prevent any development of this lot in any way, which is what the name, the letters to the HDC say, and which is what the letters to the, this board said, what I want to point out is that my client can already put another house on the empty lot now, as you know, allows for a second dwelling. They could easily develop this lot in a different, without permission of this board. The question really just is a matter of whether or not they would be able to subdivide it or not, not whether or not they would be able to develop it. So I think there's been some confusion amongst the neighbors about whether or not they would be able to try to prevent subdivision, or is prevent developments just by preventing subdivision. And I don't think they could. So I'm having to answer any questions or clarify any points?
Anyway, you...
The zoning allows for income averaging.
Frontage averaging.
Income averaging, I like that.
Income averaging, yeah. Frontage averaging.
I like to average mine with ads.
Is that for, does that include approval not requiring subdivisions, or is just for approval required?
No, no, it's for approval not required subdivision.
Both.
Yeah. The only requirement is that you have enough frontage as if, as if you were doing it on its own. So in this case, we need a hundred feet, we have over a hundred and thirty-seven feet. And the other is that you have no area that's less than fifty feet. And so what we're running into here is in order to jog around the house is where you get forty-six point nine feet of frontage and forty-four point two feet at your nearest point.
Okay. Have, and I understand the HDC denied this. Is it before the selectmen now?
It is. It'll be before the selectmen in May twenty-first. Although my preference would be to get a permit here and then withdraw that appeal.
My preference is really going to be to listen to the selectmen first, I think. But, you know... But, you know, okay.
Well, you know, frankly, I would say regardless, even if the selectmen, if the selectmen deny the appeal, we would still come in for this, but...
Well, if they deny it, but if they...
If they do, then we just move the house.
Right.
But, more likely than not, there would be a significant impact in the time and money and burden on the town and the neighbors involved in going through those processes, and frankly, it also is the situation where the house is more likely to be moved, and although my client doesn't necessarily keep a position on whether or not they want to move the house or not, because that's not their concern, to the extent we could come up with a solution that makes both sides happy, that by creating the subdivision and also not creating a situation that requires moving the house, that's acceptable to my client. So we, they'd be fine with the house, with creating the subdivision in a way that doesn't require moving the house. And I would hope that the neighbors would appreciate that, but I don't, it's not my preference.
Is the owner of the property here?
Hello, Mary Ellen.
Okay. Have any of the neighbors been in the basement of this house? It's a disaster. I mean, somebody's going to jack it up and put a new basement in there, and, you know, they will face it with whatever, but you cannot, my opinion, and I'm not a contractor, is you can't renovate that house without jacking it up and putting a former basement in there. That's terrible.
That's what we heard from the engineer and the contractors that we looked at as well.
I will get to the audience in a minute.
No, I understand that, but it just...
Let's not, you know, get into the one-to-one dialogue. So anyway, anybody else on the board right now? Questions for Steven? The appeal process has started with the HDC and the selectmen, and you'll be heard the 25th?
First.
21st.
Are you, so when you go before the selectmen, are they, are they only dealing with the HDC's decision, or is the, are they also dealing with the fact that they didn't issue a decision within the sixty days?
They're not dealing with the constructive grant, because this constructive grant, yes, because the constructive grant didn't actually happen until after they denied it, because if, you know, they would deny it, then they should have posted it in a certain amount of time, and they haven't.
Right.
So we have not yet filed for the constructive grant, and say, it's a fairly aggressive filing to make against the HDC, and I prefer not to, I prefer it to do it in a way that was...
Let the selectmen make their decision.
Well, if the selectmen overturn the HDC, then we'll do that. If the selectmen do not overturn the HDC, I'll go back and file for the constructive grant, and, you know, that, that is not necessarily respecting the wishes of the board, it's taking advantage of a, you know, residual problem that they have, you know, and it's legally my client's right to do so, but they want to try to do this in a way that's, that's less aggressive, if they, if they can.
But you have, you have at least two other open options right now, just to be clear, and this one, you feel is just the third option and/or maybe a little cleaner? I don't, I don't really see that, but...
Well, I don't know if the selectmen are going to overturn or support the HDC. My position is that they should overturn the HDC, but that's, you know, not always what they will do, and then we end up in, potentially in litigation. The constructive grant process could also end up in litigation. It could easily turn into a very time-consuming, very expensive, very complicated process.
Well, so could this, so you...
So could this.
But regardless of the HDC, like, say there was just was no HDC?
Yeah.
And you guys just wanted to try to subdivide this without moving the house as is, you would need to come before us anyway to do this.
If there was no HDC, we would have just moved it.
Yeah.
Like everybody else.
No, I mean, like, if you weren't, I'm just saying, if you weren't moving the house, leaving the house where it is, then you would need to come before us anyway. So this isn't just, I, my feeling is like this...
Well, but I think we would simply say, move the house.
Right, normally...
I don't think we would grant, I don't think we would grant this relief.
Right, right.
And with, I think the solution would be, pick your house up, move it two and a half feet.
Yeah.
That's, that distance.
Right, that's what I, my client, that's what I'm applying for. The zoning board is never going to give you a permit to move, to not move a house that you can't move, and then we applied to the HDC for that permit, and they said no.
Especially given the fact that the house, structurally, I haven't been in it, don't know it, is probably in need of structural repair, and, and once you jack a house up, moving it an extra two and a half feet, it makes no difference, but...
Right, so then it makes sense, I mean, you're saying you've been in it, but it makes sense that if this is going to have to be jacked up, and a basement's going to have to be put in it, that it should just be moved.
Well, arguably, but...
Not the HDC.
Yeah, unfortunately, the...
Why did the HDC trump?
Well, they don't necessarily, and that, that, we would obviously, if you want to get into that, trump the HDC if we were to grant this, but why wouldn't we grant it since there is the option of moving it still open? I don't, I don't know, but... Anybody else, Karen, you got anyone?
I mean, I think they're concentrating, well, the HDC might be concentrating more on the aesthetic value of it, and, I mean, personally, I side with the applicant on moving the house, as long as they're structural. If they're going to have to do everything over for that foundation, might as well move it, makes sense.
If we could get permission to, we would be here.
Right.
Well, and that option is still open through a variety, two other avenues, so...
So can, so, so does this hearing then give you further of a bolster with the, with the selectmen, to say that, I mean, it seems from the board that we're not really willing to...
Well, we're going to hear from the audience first, and then we'll continue the discussion, but...
That seems like we're putting the cart before the board. With, with, if we were to make a decision when the, when the selectmen have to...
No, arguably, but...
Well, I...
I mean, I think Steve's making the, sorry, Steve's making the argument that if we were to vote a certain way, he would, you know, it's just, this is just one of three options, and if we were to grant it, the other two options, I assume, would go away. They would be moved.
Right, that's right. If you, if you were to grant it, then there would be no need for the other options. You know, I guess if you look at the requirements for variance, I really do think although it's not a preferred permit grant, that it's met here, because it's such a unique situation with this specific house that's not applicable to end lot, that's not applicable to others, and that granting it would not be substantially detrimental to the public good.
Well, the problem I have with that, Steve, is that, that, that supposed condition or hardship or situation has not been foreclosed yet. I mean, it's still open, the HDC may be overturned, in which case you can move it, in which case there is no reason to grant the variance. So until that option would be totally foreclosed, I don't, I don't, you know, I'm a little reluctant to vote it, but...
What are you proposing, continuing it?
Well, I'm proposing first, we're going to listen to the neighbors, they're here, and, and then, then we'll further, have further discussion.
I would make one offer to the board, and I don't know if it would make a difference or not, but my client would be willing to restrict the lots, prevent the second dwelling on each lot, if that was seen as a favorable improvement here. I don't know if the board cares to engage in that category or not, but if you saw it as an improvement, it's something that my client would consider.
Okay, thank you. Let me go to the audience.
And, you know, working on the summary, and this is a difficult thing to do.
And no extensions? Go ahead, just identify yourself for the tape, please.
Um, yes, Kevin, here's, I'm on the, the historical condition, if any, please, for that, but I'm speaking as a former member of the HDC.
Good, timeout. Can you hear? Will you go up to the microphone and speak, please? That one may work, too.
I just want to comment as a former member of the HDC, I sat on this, on this particular case, and Mr. Cohen makes some very general, you know, sweeping statements at the HDC, says no, but, you know, everybody else gets a yes. I want to point out that this, that this particular property is a very, very rare piece of property, and it's one that zoning and that, and that the HDC and everybody should do their damnedest to protect. It's, you know, this property predates the road. It has one of the only, perhaps the only remaining well on the property. It dates back, you know, archaeologically, perhaps even pre-contact. But Mr. Cohen goes on to say that the HDC moves houses all the time. Yeah, you know, they do. Oftentimes, it's when a house has been moved once before, it's allowed to get moved, you know, again, somewhere else, that's how Nantucket, you know, came to be. But there's a house at 15 Pleasant, the Sanford House, that was also told not to be moved, because its location to the street was very, very important. It had the same kind of foundation, it was fixed from the inside. We have to stop on Nantucket, tearing all these things out and thinking that it doesn't matter. I think the HDC did an excellent job with this. It was a four-to-one vote, it was not unanimous, and I really hope you consider, you know, at least letting the board of selectmen take their next step, and not doing this to kind of circumvent that process. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Yes, Sarah Alter, I represent a variety of neighbors. I brought you a pictorial of the neighbors that I represent.
Popular group?
There's some that did get on that, so, yeah, look at that.
Some, some of my clients are here, but not all of them were able to be here. David Barman, Lori Robertson at Six Pine Street, Dawn and Beverly Harris are here, they're direct butters at Eight Rays Court, Richard and Nancy Scott at Eight Pine Street, Philip Kendall at 11 Fair, Robert Amick at Nine Judith Chase, John Sylvia at Six Rays Court, Bobby and Billy Gosh at Four Traders Lane, Hazel Jackson at Five Rays Court, and Judith Fautafeld at Four Fair Street. I just want to stick with the variance piece of this. I think variances should be a grant of last resort. I think we know the statute is very strict on variances, it's really hard to meet the standard for a variance. In this case, this isn't a last resort, there are still avenues open to the applicant, they haven't exhausted all of their remedies. I don't think that they meet any of the tests set forth under either the statute or the bylaw for a variance. There's no God-given right to subdivide, just because you have a certain amount of land area, it doesn't necessarily mean that you get to subdivide and that you get to put aside all of the rules of the zoning bylaw and 40A in order to do that. They have an option to pursue the house move through the Board of Selectmen and their constructive grant process. If they can get through that successfully, well, that's a fight for another day. In this particular avenue, though, we're talking about a variance. It's supposed to be a condition that's unique to the particular property, its soil, topography, shape of the lot, or its structures, and I don't think that, we have that here. There are many houses that are similarly situated in the, in the core. This is the historic downtown core. This is the most important part of your charge, is maintaining the integrity of the historic core. I think many of the distinctions were glossed over by Steve. The, there's a huge difference between a, two, having two primary dwellings built next to each other, and a primary and a secondary dwelling. Secondary dwellings are incredibly different architecture, scale, location, sighting. Two primary dwellings next to each other are completely different vernacular, they're going to read completely differently on that street. We don't have a hardship here, yet. If we do, ever at all, they have the right to use their property, they can do a second dwelling, they can improve it the way that they want. I think what they're trying to do here, and it's understandable, the property had been on the market, they're attempting to maximize their value as they leave the island, but I don't know that this board should be assisting them in doing that. Again, when you look at the requirements of the, of the bylaw and the statute, you have to look, not only is there the uniqueness with shape, soil, topography, there has to be some sort of hardship, and it has to not be detrimental and in derogation of the bylaw, and I think it, it actually would be in this particular case. If you were to lean toward granting this variance, and I don't want to give you any encouragement whatsoever in doing that, but I would hope that if you were going to grant it, you would consider putting a significant number of restrictions on the property, not just limiting it to two dwellings, but maybe limiting a building envelope and size of that dwelling that could go on the newly created lot. There's some significant site issues, this Judith Chase Lane is an incredibly narrow road, it's about, I think, eight feet wide at certain points, it's going to be difficult to get trucks and other equipment in there, there should be restrictions on that, there should be restrictions on the driveway and parking, the height of the building, and also maintaining some of the historic features of the lot. So if you grant it, I hope, and I hope you won't, I hope you will put on significant restrictions. If you don't grant it, I think you should at least wait until the whole HDC process has played itself out, but even then, I think you should deny the variance. The bylaw should not be used in this sort of way. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good, sorry, it's all her first, you're next.
Hi, Lucy Dillon, again.
Are you just speaking in the microwave? Don't turn it on, though.
Hi, Lucy Dillon, again. I'd like the board to, to do its best to protect the streetscape of Judith Chase. I think that this street is very similar to Martin's Lane, it's one of the unique streets of Nantucket, and what makes you Nantucket unique. Thank you.
Thank you. Just, just as an aside, a quick calculation on, what's the available ground cover ratio on this lot, Steven?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent, roughly 12,000 square, I mean, yeah, 12,000 square feet?
Oh, five, yeah.
So 6,000 square feet could be built on this lot, arguably, as it is now?
By the ground cover, yeah.
Right. And the, this, this speaks to Sarah's point about the second dwelling being a different size, or different, it could be, arguably, it could be bigger than this house, so, from the stra, I'm not saying it would all fit in, et cetera, but, you know, the applicant does have other, you know, there easily could be another big house there, so just to keep that in mind. Who's next? You had your hand up, please. Please.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Philip Kendall. I bought the property on Judith Chase Lane, actually from Fair Street. My family owns the Barnacle Inn. The Barnacle Inn is directly across from St. Paul's Church, and our property carries down Judith Chase Lane, just past the front gate of that property. We've owned that business for 46 years, grew up next to the property, it's very unique property. The lawyer, when he was speaking about the HDC decision to deny, their application made mention of the fact that it was another house. Well, it's not just another house, this is a very, very old house, and you have a big decision to make here. This house, 1740, whaling men lived there, Underground Railroad, they say, came through that house. Secret rumors are in that house. There are inscriptions in that house over the fireplace by men we don't know. It's very unique property, so that's something that you want to keep in mind. The location of the property is between two churches, probably within 200 yards of the Summer Street Church and St. Paul's Church, right in the middle. If the board is leaning towards a variance, I would ask for a restriction... If the board is leaning towards a variance, I would ask for a restriction of construction in the summer months. The Barnacle Inn, the Summer Inn, our business would be impacted very heavily by a project. Edward mentioned that a big house could go in there, secondary houses. People come to Nantucket in the summer for quiet times. We're probably 30 feet from the corner of that property. Our property is maybe 10 feet from the front door of it. And I would ask for a restriction, similar to the one on Broad Street, if you lean in the direction of the variance, which I hope you do not do. Big reason why the HDC turned down the application originally is because the easternmost corner of the house is on the sidewalk. It's where they put the house before the road was there. I hope you have a chance to visit the property so you can see for yourself just how different this is. This is a very unique place. I think that as you go through your decision process, you need to take into account the impact on the Barnacle Inn, the churches. A lot of people go from church to church on their walking tours on Judith Chase Lane. If that were to be closed for the summer for construction purposes, it would impact everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Deborah Timmerman, Chairman of the Nantucket Historical Commission. And we were at the hearing at the HDC when this came up. It wasn't a four-to-one vote. It was four to an abstention by the chairman, just to keep the record clear. A lot of the points, I was going to say, have been brought up by people already. I will say that this is an extremely historic house. And if we continue to kill the goose that laid the golden egg, which brings all these wealthy people here, which is how we continue to live 30 miles out to sea, we're going to be very, very sorry. And it's a slow evolution and it's hard to see when it's happening, but it's been happening for years and it continues to happen. It's really scary. What concerns me about this, other than the fact that it's a very historic property going back over several hundred years and the existing well, that's the only existing working well in the downtown area of Nantucket. There was also a blacksmith shop by the first owner, who I believe was a hussy. And the NHC would certainly like to see a, I don't know what the proper term is, when archaeologists come in and look at the soil to see what's there, because I can't imagine there's not some very good stuff there because it's never been disturbed in all this time. Also, the butter, the Sylvia house, which probably started out its life as a carriage house or a barn, is almost right up to that property line. And, you know, just looking at it makes me feel squinched that there would be another house put in there. You know, I remember the streetscape of, there were two women that ran a garden thing right beyond the big wall of the Morris End House. And it's really sad that that is gone. It happened very quickly and, you know, as a lot of things do on this island, all of a sudden it's done and you can't go back and undo it. I'm really concerned about that continuing to happen on our island, which is breathtakingly beautiful and so special that people from all over the world come here, much to our economic delight. So, I would urge you to not entertain any thoughts of changing this. There's no room for this here. There's no room for another dwelling in terms of visually. And I hope that your common sense would rule on this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Could you, can you show me where the well is? It's been mentioned a number of times. I've read about it.
The well is right about there.
So, it's about?
Yeah, I'd like to see that, too.
Oh, actually, that may be it.
Where is this, Sarah?
It's me making notes. So, it's in the middle of this lot.
Yeah, it's in the middle of that.
I can just note it on that. Do you mind, Sarah? Can you show me where the well is on this so that we can all pass this around? Plus or minus? I'm not going to.
Is the well, is the well sitting above grade?
Well, you can see, I think it's a little structure.
It looks like the one in front of our, there is a structure above it.
There is.
It is a 50 or 60 foot deep well, I guess, filled with lines.
And how do they get, I mean, they use that well?
No, no, they don't use it.
But it's worse.
I'm surprised you didn't pick it up on the plan.
X approximately marks the spot. Okay. Anybody else want to talk?
I'm just briefly.
Go ahead.
Don. Don Harris. My wife, Beverly, and I are the largest debutters. We're on Rays Court. We're the ones that weren't informed until very recently that all of this was going on. I don't want to be redundant. There's so much I could say and I won't be redundant. I would urge you to, if you haven't already, please read the letter in that you got in your packages from Michael May from the Preservation Trust. He says quite eloquently some of the things that I think we all believe. Attorney Cohen made a couple of comments I would like to respond to. He said he thought there was confusion among the neighbors and that the Morrisons could in fact build a dwelling next door. We do recognize that, but we also realize that if this did become a buildable lot, there would not only be the house that's there now, there would be a new house next door and each would have the right to build a subsequently, subsequently build a second dwelling. We could be looking at four buildings where we now look at one. Attorney Cohen also said earlier in his remarks, he made the flat statement that this is large enough to be a buildable lot. The property next, the part next door is large enough to be a buildable lot. If that were true, I don't think he'd be here asking for a variance. The Sylvia building, somebody mentioned the Sylvia building, the huge barn next door. It's not only close to the property, it is right on the property line to the point where their eve overhangs the Morrison's property and the Morrison's gave them an easement for that at some point in time.
Thank you.
I think what the attorney was, I think what the attorney was addressing, addressed about the lot is that he's here for a variance for frontage, not for the size of the lot. The frontage is, they lack the necessary 50 feet of frontage.
Is there anybody else in the audience right now? No? Mr. Cohen? Why is he talking to the microphone, please?
So, Mr. Chairman, maybe I'm not that smart, but I don't, I'm having trouble adding this up. The neighbors keep saying that this house, and the HDC says that this house in its location is so sacrosanct that it shouldn't be touched. And I'm trying to find a solution that allows for it to not be touched because what we're talking about is just on paper. We would not move the house if we get this permit. If we win at the HDC or do the constructive grant, we're going to move the house, which is what they don't want. But, you know, what my client would like to see is a variance that allows for either frontage averaging or for that minor setback encroachment, which would be about as common as you could find in that area. I mean, to have a lot of 6,000-plus square feet with one corner being in a two-foot setback encroachment, you know, that's a pretty conforming lot in the downtown area to only have that one little thing or to have a frontage averaging where it's just all on paper and you don't even, you know, you don't, you don't actually have any nonconformities. What we're trying to do is create an extremely conforming lot, a lot that's more conforming than most of lots in the area, and to accommodate the neighbor's desire to have the house not moved and to have limited development there. You know, if you wanted to have, to discuss a building envelope restriction so that, you know, that there wasn't some windfall from our client and having four dwellings and those kind of things, that's fine. We're trying to find a solution here that works for everybody. And I think that the zoning board uniquely has the opportunity to put those kind of conditions in place, whereas the HDC and the Board of Selectmen only have a yes or a no, you know? And if frankly, if we, if I can't get a yes there eventually, I'll just come back here and we'll be in the same position. So, what I'd like to do now is get a solution that allows for the subdivision either through one of these two variances and has reasonable conditions that do what the neighbors are saying. They want to see minimum development of this lot. They want to see the house not moved. Great.
Okay, so you're willing to get together with the neighbors and maybe try to come to some agreement as to a reasonable set of conditions?
Absolutely. I mean, I'm not.
Are the neighbors willing to entertain that notion?
Like the well not being disturbed?
Well, we don't have to go into every detail right now, but.
Yeah. I.
It may not be possible, by the way.
I do not see a scenario in which the HDC approves demolition of the well. So, I don't, it's not that hard of a condition to agree to.
All right. So, I mean, go ahead, Michael.
I think, I think the neighbors here have to realize that them being here, and if we grant this, we grant it with a lot of conditions. We could grant it with a lot of conditions, not that we're going to, but we could grant it with a lot of conditions. And one of those, those conditions can range from when, the time of year they can build. It could range to the size of the house. It could range to lots of different things. We can't get into architectural details of the house.
That's what the HDC is for.
No, I think, Mr. Chairman, what I prefer seeing is, I would want to continue this and I'd make that motion at the appropriate time until the selectmen come to a vote on this.
Well, it is an interesting question because, Stephen, are you willing to, if you were to get relief, you're willing to give up on the selectmen, that would be, that would be a condition.
Yeah.
The selectman appeal would go away as would a constructive grant.
That's right.
The difference being that if, if the Morrison's prevail at the selectman level and go back to the HDC and ultimately get to move the house, there would be no, I mean, Sarah can correct me because I'm sure I'm wrong, but there would be limited opportunity to put further restrictions on either, either of the two lots. So, by being here, by agreeing to some conditions, at least, you know, with a nod so far as to only one dwelling on each lot, not disturbing the well.
No construction in the summer.
No construction in the summer, et cetera, et cetera. We don't have to get into it all now. You know, the neighborhood may be better off, but that's not for me to say. That's your decision to make. Would someone like to speak?
I can say at least on behalf of the Harrises that we're willing to sit down with Steve and try to come up with some restrictions that would work, that we'd want the issue at the Board of Selectmen to be postponed until we were able to do that. Because I don't think we have the ability to hammer out all the restrictions that we need to in a careful and thoughtful way.
By the 21st.
Here today. We certainly do by the.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not proposing to do that.
Yeah, we certainly do by the, by the 21st, but then we'd, we'd need to come back to this board at the next meeting at the beginning of June to see if you're even willing to grant the variance on those conditions. You see what I mean? I wouldn't.
Yeah. It's a little bit of a chicken and an egg because, well, Stephen, Mr. Cohen would have to agree to postpone the appeal of the selectmen.
Correct.
Because if he got.
And because we're prepared also to go and oppose that as well.
Hard to believe.
We'd like, I know. It's shocking, I'm sure. But at a certain point, it's worth our time to sit down with Mr. Cohen and see if we can work something out that avoids the expense of the Board of Appeals and the selectmen and whatever happens beyond that.
How does the board feel about continuing this matter until June?
I think it makes sense.
You?
And we're talking about postponing the Board of Selectmen's hearing regarding the appeal.
Yeah. I would send a request to the selectmen asking for continuance until after the June ZBI meeting. That's not, not a problem.
And the board feels comfortable putting these guys in this direction? I mean, we're still talking about variance relief.
Yeah, it's, it's a reasonable question.
I'm generally not in favor of this, and we haven't been in favor of it. I do think that there is a benefit, a net benefit to the, I really do, to the neighborhood with a lot that you have potentially some control over versus a lot that, as Mr. Tool said, you have 1,900 square feet on the ground now, you could have 4,000 square feet footprint on the ground on the other loft, still be in performance with zoning and everything. And I don't think anybody wants to see that.
It's not really true. The math doesn't work out because the new lot's 5,000 square feet. You have 2,500 feet, but you can still have quite a big house, is the point.
Yeah, and you know, the 5,000-square-foot house could have a footprint of 2,500 square feet, but you could ask for, well, well, it's a deep subject. I don't know.
There are a lot of moving parts.
You know what I would like? I'd like to see a plan that has the well on it, and I think everybody else would.
Absolutely.
And I think this, it's, it's important to the, to the neighbors to see that also and for you to see that so that if you are having a discussion, everyone knows where the well is.
Yeah, I believe it's shown maybe in the HDC submission that's also in your package, but I'll make sure that we update the site.
I didn't see it. Jeffrey, in response to your question, which is totally legitimate, of course.
We've got two lawyers sitting up in front of us arguing against variance relief. And now, and now we're telling them, you know what, maybe.
Yeah, it's legit. I mean, we don't normally.
I think.
I personally have some problem, frankly, without being able to move the house two and a half feet. You're talking this far. Does the house lose its historic significance? I find that a little hard to believe, but when you're talking this, they used to move houses all the time out here in the old days, so.
I mean, I would feel more comfortable granting variance relief if they were to go to the Board of Selectmen and get rejected on all their appeals.
Well, again, it's a chicken and an egg thing. Then.
Well, I understand that, but then at that point, Mr. Cohen's.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Can I make one point?
One.
Not, not to speak against my own earlier conviction, but the one distinction that I'd make with what Mr. Thayer's saying is that we also have the specter of the constructive grant hanging over our head. So, almost regardless of what the selectmen say, we have the constructive, it's a very messy situation, in other words, and so, I don't know.
I mean, I guess, I guess, to your point again, Jeff, if indeed the neighborhood felt better about the whole situation, maybe I would, maybe all of us, maybe none of us would feel more amenable to a variance. Maybe not. I mean, we're not voting on anything.
No, I think I would feel more amenable towards the variance, but still, we're granting variance relief. And in my mind, there's got to be some, I mean, if we granted variance relief for everything that came before us, just because it was going to be a better solution for the neighborhood, I don't, it's really.
Well, I guess you're making, you know, the argument would be if you had a house, you know, that arguably was not historically significant, you'd be able to move it in a heartbeat. And because of the age of this house, you're, you can't move it according to the HDC. And that's arguably a condition imposed by others, you know, and I could see my way to that, but again, we're not going to vote on that now.
No, and I, you know, I understand what everyone's saying and I would not necessarily, I don't like to grant variances for this type of thing. I do think that the age of this house enters into it and the, you know, the topography of the structure or whatever. I also think that the, in the long run, it could be more beneficial for the neighborhood because of, you know, it may be less dense than four houses. It may be smaller than, you know, who knows what they.
I mean, I'm only one vote and I'm not even sure how I would vote. It certainly is a, I mean, it's a very good solution to move forward as we're proposing. There's no doubt about that.
And it would help if, if, I think it would help if the neighbors were in favor of the variance, that we get letters.
Yeah, let me just, just be clear. Just because we're suggesting, if.
Yeah, let me just be clear, just because we're suggesting, if you will, you get together and talk, doesn't mean you have to agree with the other side. You could come back in a month and say, no, we don't, you know, so don't feel that we're pressuring you, or it's just a possible solution, or a poss, not even a solution, we may vote a different way. But I think what we're saying is that if you go that route, you're involved in a conversation, whereas if you, if you prevail with the Board of Selectmen and you can move the house, and you just move the house to buy the lots, and there's no conversation, you guys can just do what you want.
Right.
And you do leave...
And I'm, sorry, I was gonna say, and I'm still not comfortable with the variance, but I think we need to give it some ti, you know, give it some time and see what you guys come up with.
I'm happy to continue until the next zoning meeting, if there's a preference, if the board is okay, you know, we may or may not work something out, and we may work something out that you decide to adopt or not adopt or modify, and I understand that there's no promises or guarantees or pressure. I guess the only thing I want to know from the board is, would the board rather see the selectmen hearing go forward on the 21st, or would the board rather see us continue that? Because, you know, I'm fine with either one, my client would obviously rather save the time and money of not going forward on multiple fronts, and I think everybody else would, but if the board would like to see what happens in the interim, that's what we would do.
What do you think?
A couple of things. I'm probably, at some point next week, I'm going to drive by this house, because it seems very interesting, people talking about secret rooms, and all kinds of other stuff, and to be honest, I've never seen this house, so I'd like to take a drive-by. But beyond that, I think the neighbors should all sit down, and there should be a, you know, just some good dialogue, what the concerns are and such, and see what happens. I would say normally, let's listen to what the Board of Selectmen have to say, but in this particular case, I'd rather see what the neighbors have to say, and see what the attorneys come up with.
Okay. It could be concurrent, I mean, I don't see that you, you know...
But I guess the issue is then, if, like, if the selectmen goes forward, then what's the point of coming back to us? Because even if the selectmen don't agree with your side, then you have the constructive grant, so you're gonna, you will get to, presumably to the move the house scenario at some point, it may just take longer.
Unless there's some legal appeal of that, that either slows it down or overturns it, but the appeal to the Board of Selectmen is not an arbitrary preciousness standard, which you're probably familiar, because it's the same when people appeal you. So the selectmen are not going to look at whether or not the HTC made a good decision, they're only going to look to see if there was a scintilla of reasonableness for them to make that decision. I'd suggest that there wasn't, but perhaps they will find that there was, and then they just uphold the HTC, and that's fine, and then I'll come back and pursue the constructive grant, you know, and then I'm sure Sarah and her clients will want to try to oppose that as well. So, you know, it could drag on for years, or we could get to a result that I think would be much better for everyone, much quicker.
Well, it certainly would be better for your clients, if it didn't take five years to get...
Maybe not for me, maybe I, you know, like...
Right, right. So let's be clear about that.
Yes. And for the neighbors, the neighbors don't want, I assume, don't want to be involved in litigation for years, you know, everybody wants to see a resolution.
Yeah, I agree, I would hope, but maybe not.
I would suggest that we continue it, and let them decide whether they want to move forward to the selectmen's hearing or not, it's really between us.
That's fine with me, I mean, the reality is, Steve, 10 to 1, all that would happen is they would remand it back to the HTC versus, you know, a straight-up overturning, so there's going to be a time lag, one way or the other.
I don't think we'd get the clear decision that would be hoped for.
Nor do I, so, anyway, to make a long story short, it sounds like we would like to continue this till the June 6th?
The 12th.
June 12th. I'll be here the 6th, no, June 12th meeting?
Turn your mic away.
And, is everybody good with that? Okay, so can someone make that motion?
Motion to continue till the June 12th meeting.
Okay, motion's been made, is there a second?
A second.
Susan Second, any further discussion? No, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Were we on it, back to, Dr. Reed?
That's a good call.
I have to have some, I can't open. It's like some sort of...
Chalcedon chocolate bars, just do the whole thing.
Sugar levels are dropping fast, you can see it.
Apparently, we're forced out.
I was gonna jam it down your throat.
Never mind, I got this.
I think I will go ahead and pass you.
All right. What's that? I'm gonna share with you.
I hope you're allergic.
All right, we ready? We are on the Vodiches, as trustee of Adagio, or Adagio Trust.
Adagio, it's a musical term.
It is, I'm not much of a music musician.
Oh, my God.
I'm a magician.
You should take a break and let that, like, the calories absorb.
I hope we're not on the tape today. Anyway, let's move on, 11 South Coast, King Street, for the applicant.
Attorney Arthur Reed, representing the applicants, Jay and Carol Vodich, trustees of their respective Adagio trusts. This is a situation in which the Vodiches' property, which they've owned for some time, in 2002, they built their house. Up until very recently, the property was in the R-20 zoning district, 20,000 square foot lot area, 12.5% more to the point, ground cover. Their lot is a conforming lot. However, subsequently, the property was rezoned from R-20 to, what is it now? What is it, VR? Yeah, VR, Village Residential, one of these newfangled zoning districts that we have, in which the maximum ground cover is 10%. The house, which was built in 2002, has ground cover of 10.2%. The Vodiches want to do a 120 square foot addition to add on to the garage on their property, to enable them to provide housing for their 1950 Willis Roadster, which has been in their family since 1952, and in order to accomplish that, they need to add on to their garage by 120 square feet. I'm telling you the story. And in any event, the point is, this structure is pre-existing non-conforming. Increasing the ground cover is a matter of special permit, not variance, it's an addition on to the residential, single-family residential structure, that they would have been able to do as a matter of right, until the recent rezoning of the property, which made them non-conforming solely as to ground cover. In the course of dealing with this, we got a plot plan prepared by Joe Marklenger, which shows that there are certain air conditioning compressors that are within the side yard setback. This was news to my clients, they've been there ever since the house was built in 2002, they have a CO. The issue of the need to maintain side yard setback for AC units is one that had really come up since 2002. At one time, these were generally disregarded by the building department, as far as whether they constituted structures within setbacks. In fact, they were all part of the original design of the house. The house was cited by a surveyor, an off-island surveyor, I might point out, who didn't quite, when we reviewed a lot of things, get it as far as Nantucket was concerned. And in any event, while we're in here, and since this show's on the plan, in addition to the special permit for increase in the ground cover, we're also asking for a special permit to validate the air conditioning compressors, which we can do in the, because of the situation of their having been, of the house having been cited by the licensed survey. Excuse me.
Pardon you.
Thank you. Now, those are the two special permits we're requesting. As you can see, the file contains numerous expressions of support from neighbors, and the air conditioning compressors, by the way, are along a boundary line that doesn't directly join a residential property, rather, it's land that belongs to the Tristroms group, and so there's no one that's being disadvantaged by that situation, and again, it's been this since the house was built. Happy to answer any questions, but that's basically what we're asking for.
I have two questions, I have two questions, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Our one is, the first one is a comment, I don't think we've ever had a sob story about a Jeep.
No.
This is the first time for everything, Michael.
And secondly, I'm just curious, do you know how your clients, how they leaned toward this zoning change, which created the problem?
The first they heard about it was when they found that they were non-conforming to their great surprise.
Aren't there grandfather periods of time, no longer, there used to be?
No, the grandfathering doesn't relate to that, the grandfathering relates to when the plan was endorsed, I mean, this plan has been around forever, it doesn't relate to...
So when zoning's changed, the next day...
You're in it.
It's actually from when it's advertised.
From when it's advertised.
Yeah, relating it back, relating it back to the first advertising of the planning
board hearing.
Just so you know, there are, the Attorney General has approved our 125 pages of zoning changes already. They're available down at the town clerk's office.
And in any event, these, this is last year that this zoning changed, anyway, but...
No, I'm just saying, you know, well, let me ask you this, Arthur, what would have been the...
It wouldn't have been here.
Before it started to, before it became village residential as opposed to farmland residential, who knows, but what was the ground cover ratio?
12 and a half percent.
It would have been over...
So overnight, you're sort of screwed out of 2 and a half percent, and that should only be on newly created lots.
That's, that's not the case. The lot is conforming, it's the lot area and frontage both ways.
All right, I don't agree with that at all.
It's only ground cover that changed.
It changed the voting by law next year.
Yeah, all right, we'll look into that.
You know, when these, like, in Scotts, it was a Citizens article that changed it from R, Scotts, it was R-20 down to R-5, years ago, years ago, years ago. They wanted it, and now they're in front of us all the time for a special permit, and it's going to be the same way with Matigan.
That got changed back, of course.
It's pretty simple, basically, this lot changed, or the structure decreased, it's non-conforming because of the zoning change, he is increasing the non-conformity by a very modest amount.
No, I understand all that, I'm simply making an editorial comment, that it's idiotic that overnight, you lose some right that you had before some concerned person decided to change the zoning in the area, I think that's funny.
Or just the planning board.
Yeah, or the planning board.
No, I agree with you, in this case, the odd twist is that it was very wise of the Vodiches to bill 10.2% ground cover, rather than 9.9.
Well, that I think is idiotic also, that just because you're above, you can continue it above.
If they were 9.9 now, and going to 10.1, we'd be here for a variance, but because they're 10.2, and going to 10.7, it's a special permit.
All right, let's focus on, go ahead, hopefully on...
Yeah, I just have one question, what was the side yard setback prior to the zoning change?
The same, 10%, 10 feet.
The units were always in that setback.
Well, that's assuming they were ever on a plan. I mean, Arthur is, although his packet is full of paper, isn't, doesn't show us one iota of evidence that there was a CO with those AC compressors as is.
Well, my client informs me that they were there when the house was built, and there's a CO.
Well, and I appreciate your client telling you that, but, you know, and I don't disbelieve your client, but there's absolutely no evidence to that effect.
My, well, I...
So I think that if you want to provide that...
My client's testimony through me, how about that?
Not good enough, flat out.
Which one do you not believe, me or my client?
You'd like to speak about this, huh?
Well, yes, I just want to put a face to...
Will you just identify yourself for the tape, please, I think we can all hear you.
My background voice doesn't come in.
No, we can hear you, just identify yourself.
Barmerstock, 42 Long Pond Drive, we are neighbors across the street from the Vodiches, and I just want to put a face to all the people who have been in support of what they want to do. We've talked, they've shared their plans with us, we've talked with them about it, and it's certainly the addition to house their Jeep will not change the complexion of a quiet, pleasantly residential neighborhood, so we're very much in support, and hopefully we will seek to grant them there.
Thank you.
I don't have any issue with the addition, I'm just more curious.
Me too, me too.
I moved, I moved to approve the relief as requested.
Both?
Yes, both, both.
All right, well, I have a problem with the AC units, just FYI, but, because I, again, it may be the case that they are on the CO, they're on the as-built for the CO, but we don't have it.
I think it's a precedent itself.
If indeed it exists, we can bring it in next time, or we can vote on simply the addition, if we can do that.
All right, I will withdraw.
I have an idea, why don't they move them to the eastern side, well, I'm assuming north, eastern side of the garage?
I think we should see what, I think perhaps if Mr. Reed brings us a CO from 2002...
And an as-built...
It doesn't show them, the off-island surveyor didn't know he was supposed to show them, he also didn't know how to calculate ground cover.
So there is no plan.
But I'm not buying this one.
There's no plan, there's no as-built plan that shows, until the one that Joe did recently.
That's probably why it's not in the package.
However, my client will swear on a stack of bibles that they've been there.
Did your client build the house?
Yeah, I mean, he was the owner, and had it built by him.
I don't think just because your client swears on a stack of bibles that it was, these AC units were in place, but the surveyor never showed them, therefore, there was no evidence to the building department that they were there, you know, it's just not adequate. I mean, they need to either show up, or they need to move them. Well, I'm not prepared to give you relief for them, let's put it that way, I don't think we says.
I don't think you do.
It's not.
Let me do this, let me withdraw without prejudice, if you will, that part of the application. So that we're only doing the special permit for the...
It is for how covered.
For the expansion.
Well, frankly, I would like to see the problem corrected, because the problem will persist forever, until it's sold, or some other poor...
Well, it would be able to be, it wouldn't be a problem if you granted the special permit, which you have the power to do, but you obviously want more evidence, which I can't do without my client being here. So that was why I would withdraw prejudice.
Again, I think it seems like a little bit of a loss of leverage, when you get the addition, the AC units remain in place forever, and, oh, we never come back to that, but...
Of course, nobody's ever complained about, they've been there for over 10 years.
That's not the point, the point is, you know, we, you know, there are sideline setbacks, these are in violation of them.
They've been interpreted in recent years as... They've, they've been interpreted in recent years as being in violation on the basis of being structures. The building department did not take that position formally.
In 2002?
I can't tell you what year it changed, but it definitely changed somewhere around that time.
Anyway.
So, we, so we can grant the addition and allow the AC intrusion to persist?
They said with special permits.
Yeah, they need a special permit.
Well, that's what Arthur's suggesting we do.
I think the hard part are...
It doesn't seem right that we would give relief on one thing and like allow knowing...
Doesn't seem right to me.
Yeah, it seems odd.
That's the hard part, yeah. Because, you know, that's something we would definitely pick up on. And since there's no evidence that they were there even in 2002, they could have been added.
Right, I feel like in, I feel like in other instances, like even if the applicant hasn't asked for relief on a setback intrusion, but we've noticed stairs or AC or something else that is a setback intrusion, made them correct that and bundled that into, yeah, of the special permit. I mean, it seems, why would we just let those AC units stay? Or we continue until you can find some evidence? I mean, I don't know, would an affidavit from the owner satisfy us?
No. Not me. But I'm only going to vote, so...
Well, I think under those circumstances, you would have to listen to the applicant and determine his credibility, just as if you were, you were sitting in a, in a court of law. I think you would find my client, when, when, my clients, when they come in and speak about it, as well as their builder, who we could bring in to be highly credible. However, once again, what we're mainly concerned with here is getting the addition. I raised the question when I saw the plot plan from Joe that showed these AC units, that this is going to be an issue and that we should deal with it. And, and that's why we applied for it. And, and again, I think on the basis of, which again, you, you don't have to believe anything that we present, but I'm telling you what my client, who was, I think, a very truthful individual, told me.
That they've been there since 2002. They were in violation in 2002.
If it was considered to be a violation, but they were certainly there.
Right, but just because they were there doesn't make it right.
Is the contractor an island contractor?
No.
So, I, so I think, I would...
Makes no sense to me.
Well, I'd like to give Arthur the option, the opportunity to find some evidence to show either that, maybe both, that they were there and that the building department at the time didn't consider them a structure or they didn't need to be shown to get a CO or they, whatever, whatever the circumstance was. And I think if we had, personally, I think if we had an affidavit from the owner, that would satisfy me. I mean, I think we have to take applicants...
But not, not to the extent that they were there. Yeah, they were there, but it has to go hand in hand with, they weren't a violation in 2002.
Right, but they were still given a CO.
Well, but they didn't show up on the as-built, so what is the building department going to do?
Did they do a final inspection?
No, they don't, no. That's not how it works.
The surveyor provides a plan that shows that...
The trust issue is that the surveyor you hire is going to...
So then, would it be your surveyor error then? Like that your surveyor screwed up?
If they were there, yeah. If we have that...
If they were there and they were in violation and then this...
The surveyor was off-island.
Yeah.
And if they, if they're off-island, they don't count them in the setback. He wouldn't have counted them here because they don't go reading everybody's zoning by law.
Well, why don't we just make relief for the Willie's home on that the units are moved out of the setback?
And that's another option. I'm just...
And so, we can move on. They can do their addition.
Come back here.
But they want to do the addition. You would rather get...
You did not, I don't want to...
They can move them right over to, with the other ones.
The north side of the garage, or the east side of the garage.
Means it's a big deal to move them?
No.
Piping.
Well, then, why wouldn't they be able to move them right here? Whatever, I don't...
There would be something there that is a bedroom that has windows. I don't know.
We don't really, I don't really care where they...
Well, first of all, why don't we ask someone, Mr. Reed, do some research as to when the building department...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, I'm listening to vote.
We asked the applicant to do some research as to when the building department started considering this type of thing in this, you know, compressors and what else they've had in, within setbacks. Does anybody recall? I mean, I don't recall.
You know, it's not like it's a rule change where there's going to be anything written down about it. That's, it's going to be...
But then, could you get an affidavit from like the building commissioner?
Yeah, it's all right.
Well, probably Marcus.
Yeah.
Marcus is the one that I think has dealt with that issue.
Brought it to the forefront, you mean?
Yeah.
All right, let's move on. I think we've gotten this one, but so, what do...
They do look pretty easy to move, potentially.
Well, would you, I mean, would you want to move them or do you want to come back?
I hate to give up my, I, I don't necessarily want to, well, let's leave it at this. I don't want to give up the possibility of being able to get permission to keep them in the present location. I do want to get permission to proceed with the, with the addition to the garage.
So, if you make the motion to grant the addition for the garage with the stipulation that the units have to be outside of the setback and you just thought you can always come back for that special permit again, can't you?
As long as we somehow have, that it's without prejudice to our being able to file a further application, which I might do this summer when he's on island.
Yeah, but by doing that, we're giving him permission to go ahead and build on the garage even though we've noted a zoning violation.
No, but, but he could not get a CO on that, that addition with those units in place.
Bear in mind, of course, it's a non-enforceable zoning violation if it's been there for more than 10 years.
But you're going to, you're going to agree to move the units or not? Or if, or are you saying...
If we have to.
Are you saying you don't want to move the units? You're not going to move the units? That's fine, then the Jeep stays outside.
We wouldn't have filed the application this way if we wanted to move the units. But it's a less, it's less of a priority than adding it onto the garage.
Well, I, I, I'm willing to certainly entertain a motion that grants the relief to do the addition with the condition that the, the AC units are outside of the setback or moved outside of the setback.
And that they can come back.
Yeah, without prejudice.
Without prejudice before we would get a, a CO for the addition, yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's fine with me.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
What's the motion? The motion is to approve the addition to the garage as granted, the special permit, with the stipulation that the air conditioning units on the west side of the structure, the northwest side of the structure are outside of setback.
Or moved outside.
Are moved outside of setback.
But I would like the language in there about without prejudice.
Oh, and without, that the applicant is able to come back without prejudice to, with a new special permit for those units if they find information that will help show that they are where they're from allocation with no violation.
I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? No, all is in favor.
Bye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just to have one thought.
One more.
Okay, John DeAngelis and Susan DeAngelis, 109 Baxter Road, for the applicant.
For the applicant, Rhoda Weinman. You may recall, my client was here for the November 14th zoning board meeting, asking...
Thank you, sorry, Rhoda.
That's okay. Asking for relief to move his structure, which was very close to the bluff at the time. And as part of the relief, he wanted to move a very small portion of the house into the county layout on Baxter Road. And so, as a result, what we had to do was, we had to get a license from the county commissioners that was executed by both my client and the commissioners to allow this to happen. Unfortunately, it didn't happen in a very timely fashion. It did happen, but I received it back on December 31st. Brought it to, bless you, brought it to Erica on the beginning of January, and the county commissioner signed it somewhere, or they didn't date it, but somewhere around the 7th or 8th of January. Because of that, we couldn't even apply for a building permit until the license was executed. So, we did apply for the building permit right away. And the building permit wasn't issued. I have a copy of it here. It wasn't issued until February, I believe it's February 11th. February 11th was when the building permit was issued. And I'm sure you all recall what this winter was like. Unfortunately, the ground was frozen. They weren't be able to dig a hole for the foundation. They weren't really be at all able to do any work for a significant period of time. They started the work late March, early April. And then, if you recall, the last storm, they stopped work. They lost over a foot in the last storm. And right now, they're less than five feet from the edge of the bluff. So...
Excuse me, why didn't they move to where?
I'm sorry? The house.
Even with them move forward?
No, it hasn't been moved. That's why I'm here.
Oh, I thought they started the work.
They started the, no, they haven't been able to start any work. See, the problem, the problem, the bottom line was that they had a May 15th date from the company that was supposed to move it. And because of all of the problems that we had getting the license executed, then getting a building permit, that all took almost three months from the time that they were here. So, the house has not been moved. And...
What, what happened between February and that? You had the permit February 11th, you said.
We had the permit February 11th. They, the ground was frozen. They couldn't dig the hole. They weren't allowed. I talked to the, both the contractor and the company that was supposed to be moving it May 15th. And because they couldn't do a significant lot of work, they lost the May 15th date. So, now, we're at the point where I called today the company that was supposed to move it May 15th. And I also called three other companies to see if there was anybody else that could move it sooner than the June 15th date that he's given us. So, I talked to Phil Marx this afternoon, before I came over here, to see if there was any way possible he could do anything before June 15th, and he cannot. So, we're in a position now where the house is in imminent danger. It definitely, if we wait until September, until after Labor Day, we don't know whether the house will still be there or not. So, what we're asking is to allow us until July 15th. I was assured today that all the work could be done by July 15th. We have six off-street parking places so that there wouldn't be any problem on Baxter Road with cars being parked there, trucks being parked there. My client has talked to the abutters. He's talked to all of the immediate abutters. You have four letters in your packet from a director butters approving this, asking the board, give them this relief. They all understand the situation because this has been going on, you know, on Baxter Road, as you know, for a very long time. There's only one letter that wasn't actually telling you not to give them relief, but came up with a proposal of giving them until June 13th, which isn't going to work because we can't get it moved until the 15th. What I was told today by Mr. Marx is that if he started it on June 15th, he thought it would take probably about eight to 10 days to get the whole move completed. And then, we want to be able to shut, you know, shut it so that it's tight with windows, doors, and shingling if we can. But if we can't, we just want to get the house moved. That's the, that's the most important thing. So, I would ask you to please consider the situation. We did have to wait a considerable amount of time just from Town Council's office to get the license agreement. We thought we would have had it much sooner than that. And then, to get the building permit. So, and the conditions this winter just didn't allow a lot of work outside during that period of time.
Anybody have any comments about that?
I just have a question. Did you complete the foundation?
Yes.
The foundation's completed?
Foundation's completed, yes.
So, is this schedule here that I'm looking at, I assume you wrote it, foundation's complete, the move from the old house, foundation and new should be completed by May? This is...
That's not, that's what it was when I submitted it. And what he's told me today, and what he's been saying for the last couple of weeks is we basically last, lost our place in line because it took so long to get to where we are now.
Could you change the July 15th end of the schedule then?
Which, I was told that we could get everything done by July 15th.
Even though the move, you, this schedule allowed for that, saying that the move was going to be done by May?
What he's saying is that he thinks the actual move will take less than two weeks. He said something like eight to 10 business days to move it and to get it on the foundation.
What, are they moving it around the island first and then putting it down?
I'm only telling you, I don't know, I'm not in the moving business. So, I'm only telling you what he told me.
No, I, I, I'm sorry, but I'm having a tough time with that one.
Do we have a professional opinion from someone in the audience? No.
No, no opinion, or no, it doesn't take 10 days to move 10 feet? No opinion.
Fair enough.
Yeah, I understand.
Smart man. Yeah, I'm not, I think, I think where there's a little bit of disconnect on some of the days. And believe it or not, I believe there was plenty of work needed on this island between February 11th and May 15th. The ground was not frozen the entire time.
I can get you an affidavit from the person that was supposed to do this that he could not do it because the ground was frozen. I mean, and I'm only telling you what he told me, but...
I'd love to see it, just for...
I mean, he told me that they could not...
For humor, first.
And he also said that while the ground was, after they started digging, that it was so wet that it had to dry out before they could do anything. So, that is what I was told. And I asked him to go through this whole thing with me.
I mean, it was frozen and then it was wet.
It was frozen and then when they finally started digging, they had to wait a period of time to get some of the work done.
Why did they, why did, I don't understand why any of that affects May 15th.
Because, well, what affects it is the company that was supposed to move it, we lost our slot.
Why?
Well, because we didn't have everything ready to move on May 15th.
Oh, that does...
What day is it now? Isn't it May, isn't it next week?
Yes, but they, they booked other things because we weren't ready. I called three other companies.
You were ready in February. Are you ready now?
It sounds like we're missing some vital pieces of the...
Why are, what, you're not ready now still?
We, we couldn't be ready if there was somebody to move it on May 15th. I called three other companies asking...
But if you could be ready, then why did this, I mean, I guess this is...
Because there's no one else that can move it.
Why did you lose your slot?
No, I guess, why did this guy, why...
We lost our slot because we weren't ready when he was ready.
But he's not ready now. It's for next week.
It was ready.
It was ready in February.
He's booked other, I'm only telling you that he's booked other business and now he can't do it till June 15th.
Is he, is the same contractor moving it on June 15th?
Yes.
But he do not have a new contractor?
I called three other companies to see if we could possibly get in before June 15th. I mean, I called across the country this morning. I called two companies off-island yesterday. Nobody can do it before June 15th, no, before the date of...
I don't understand.
I don't understand either. The whole thing is beyond you. The foundation is there. As Susan said, it's there. You're ready.
Why, yeah, why?
Because you don't have anybody to move it.
But you had, I'm confused. You had someone to move it. They were scheduled for May 15th. You have a permit that gives you a limit of when that work needs to be done. They knew that. What needs to hap...
You had your foundation done.
Your foundation's in.
You're not, it's not, it wasn't scheduled to, I mean, it sounds like there's an issue. This person that you were contracted with, it's not, I, I mean, I get why you're here, but like, he overbooked. You were first in line. Those other people should be bumped.
I don't know that he overbooked. I think he booked because at that point in time, when he was ready, we weren't ready.
But he's not ready because he was scheduled for next week. I don't understand.
He can't do it. I mean, I, I almost begged him today, and he cannot do it.
But don't you have a contract with this guy?
This is Phil Marks.
I know, but like, I don't understand, like.
I didn't hire him, so.
Am I the only one?
No, he's not.
It doesn't make any sense to me.
Usually they won't schedule a move until you have a building permit, but you guys have had a building permit in February.
I wish Phil was here so he could explain why this, why now we have to extend to July 15th and why it's not ready, because it sounds like you guys are ready, we're talking about a date in the future next week that he committed to, I don't understand where the.
He basically explained to me that we lost our place and I, you know, I don't know how he runs his business, I don't know who he is, so I can't, I can't explain to you why he did this, but he did it. And I've got a client who has a house that is in imminent danger and I'm asking, we've got four letters from director abutters saying they have no problem with this, they're the ones that are gonna be most impacted by it.
One, one letter doesn't quite say that.
I said, no, we've got four that are supporting and one that isn't supporting it, but suggested a compromise of a date, so, but the director abutters.
That compromise wouldn't work because you can't move until the 15th.
That's correct, I, that's what I said.
Wait, what, what was your date that you had?
May 15th.
Originally we had a May 15th.
Because this schedule says it would, should be completed by May 15th, but you're saying that Phil says it takes eight to 10 days?
That's what he told me today.
All right, so what are you looking for now?
I'm confused.
To at least get it moved and if you can't.
I'm not prepared to do that, I mean, you, you have a date supposedly June 15th. Now, it does not take eight or 10 days or two weeks to move a house on the lot, it takes, I'm gonna get, you know, you can move a house across the road in a day. If you're going from here, you know, to Helen Bar, so, and then you put it down another day, I'll give you three days, but.
That was a conversation that I had an hour before.
If you want to bring Mr. Marks in.
We don't have time to do this.
I know you don't, but you should have, who, who would have appeared to all of these statements of not being able to do it on the 15th, that it takes 10 days to move it. I mean, I just don't buy it.
No, it just, it does, it sounds very fishy that he agreed to move a house on May 15th and then decided without telling anyone, I mean, if he had told you two months ago, you could have come to us two months ago, it seems very strange that now it's May, it just seems, it just, this just doesn't make any sense.
You know what, I, I just don't think we can leave this house.
No, I know, I agree, and it's unfortunate, it's.
The house is gonna fall in.
Right, it's unfortunate, your client's the one who's in the bad position.
I mean, the house has been sitting there with no doors or windows on, is that correct?
I haven't looked at the house to see.
I mean, I can't remember, I've been out there, I've driven out there, but I can't remember, but I'm not.
I definitely saw people all winter working out there, like my husband, I know about there some bad business and there was.
I would go for some date. What date can he take that from where it is and drop it on the foundation?
He said June 15th is the first day he could start.
Then maybe they should stop.
First day he could start?
That he could start.
Then do the lower level.
Yeah, well, you get.
Get the foundation, get the house back on the foundation and then stop.
Stop.
He doesn't have to do the rest of the work this year.
Exactly.
I mean, the house won't be in danger.
No, I'm, I'm sure my client knew that, I think the key is to get the house moved.
Yeah.
Right, and that I understand.
By June, June 18th?
He's not gonna get it done in three days, I mean, that's what he told me today, so.
So he said June 15th, he could start that.
He said you could start it on June 15th.
That's a Sunday.
If you can put on it, that we can just have permission to move it on the foundation and then start.
No, you don't want to know that.
Well, we have to put a date.
With no date? No.
Well, yes, if you're gonna start on June 15th and as soon as it's, but I don't, I can't.
No.
It's three days because he's telling me you can't do it in three days. I don't know anything about moving house, I mean, that's not what I do, I can only tell you what he told me.
Do we think that five days might be enough time?
I mean, all I know is we moved a house off of, whatever that street is, Ocean Avenue, and they moved it down the road in a day, a big house.
I've ever, I've ever presented on a house from Lincoln Circle that moved over to.
Well, there's prep work.
No, I'm assuming the prep work is done before the move date.
It is.
Right, the move date is the 15th.
It's a physical picking up and moving of the building.
Or is he saying he can start work on the property on the 15th?
No, I don't know who preps it, I don't know whether he preps it or the contractor preps it, I have no idea, I can only tell you that it's.
I wish I'd gone out there.
Yeah, I, I, I guess.
You know what, I, I, I'll shoot for something, then we can tear it apart, you can tear it apart. I move that we modify the variance to grant an extension to until July 22nd.
No, no, no.
July?
Oh, June 22nd, June 22nd, 2014.
I was gonna say June 25th, and that's 10 days.
No, it's been a week.
I know, but like this house is gonna fall in the drink, like it's.
No, I know, but he should be able to get it done in a week.
Yeah, but you know what?
But obviously he can't, like he was supposed to do it.
We, we all know, we all know what happens that time of year, I mean, you know, all the guys in the business, we deal with them.
I just don't want the client, the client, the, I don't want the applicant to lose his house because he made a contract with someone who's, who is.
Well, that's a down in the situation.
Let me, this is fresh business.
Well, I, I, this is my experience, Susan, that if you have a, even a verbal contract with somebody and the whole thing falls apart, there's usually two sides to the story and we're probably not hearing all, you know, because Rhoda doesn't know all the details.
Right, agreed.
But let's not say it's all the contractor.
No, no, but the client, I'm just saying, I'm saying like, we don't.
Applicant has no culpability in terms of.
If, if it was, no, that's what I'm saying, if this was a different situation, I would say we should continue this because I'd like to hear more of what's going on behind the scenes before we just really nilly like, say, here's an extra month to get this work done that you've had six months to get done, but the fact that this guy's house is now five feet from the bluff, it's not like it's gonna sit there all summer and he's losing rental income or like whatever, like his house could fall over the edge, so unfortunately.
I think we're all in favor of allowing to move it, I just don't think you need to give him 10 days, my feeling is, is if you give him 10 days, they'll take the 10 days.
Right, I agree.
Plus.
A week is more than enough.
Okay, I mean, I'm just one person.
Yeah. That was my only point is that, you know, I just, I just hate, if he says he needs eight days, you know, giving him seven days should be efficient.
I was just involved with one, they, you know, they got the building permit and moved the house in three days.
Yeah.
They're just going down the road.
I agree, I agree, I think eight to 10 days is.
Well, maybe you have the wrong company doing it, but that's, I, I'm only asking that they be allowed to move.
But don't you think, don't you think the company would understand the urgency if they only had five days and they would get it done?
I tried this morning to get him to say to me it won't take 10 days.
Well, again, it just seems that maybe there's a backstory there.
Well, I don't think so.
Because most people like to do work and get income and get it done as quickly as possible, get the income on the books and move on, so, but anyway, we don't know the backstory.
Well, six days is a month, so if we could have.
Till that Friday, this thing's due, it's the 21st.
I mean, that would have.
I'm good with that.
21st, oh, you're until Saturday?
Done.
Or, or the.
I mean, it's a, it's a, you know, the, the stipulation on the date is there for a reason because it's, you know, and, and come, I think this process come, didn't he come back for another extension or something? Or was it to ask about the license?
Yeah, he had to go get the license.
He came in formally first and then he came back.
Yeah, to just see what, how we felt about a license, right?
Right.
Okay.
Guess what was your motion?
Was to give him until Saturday, the 21st, is that the date, Michael?
It's a Saturday.
To complete the move.
No, mine was until the 22nd.
What was your motion, Michael?
Does, I, I'll change my motion to make it to the 21st, whatever happens on the, whatever is done on the 21st, that's what you get, you know, we don't care what's done on the 21st, as long as it's moved, you can't do anything after the 21st.
It's gotta be secure.
At 5:00.
The ones that be secure and right down on the foundation.
6:00, midnight out here. I.
Foundation's there already.
Hey. Okay, so was that the motion?
Yep.
Do we have any, we don't have any other stipulations like.
Any other would remain in.
All stipulations remain, all of the stipulations remain the same.
Because nobody's complaining about the noise, no.
Well, the original decision said construction period, it didn't say exterior, it just said construction, so I assume if it's moved, we can do something inside?
Yeah, we don't have any jurisdiction over interior construction.
That's what I'm saying.
I would agree with that, would you?
Yeah, but the doors and windows are on, if they're just doing construction with saws and everything going, everyone can hear that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I almost raised my hand on the Broad Street thing, just because you're doing inside work with every window open because it's 80, you know, 75 degrees doesn't mean it's silent.
Well, I understand, but that's not what we nor, we don't ever talk about.
No, I know, there's, if somebody was asking for an extension.
Wow.
But, I mean, I'm, it's, it's.
Sounds like you don't believe in the.
I don't necessarily, but anyway.
Okay.
Okay, Susan's gotta go, I.
No, no, I, I just.
Okay, so.
I made my motion.
June 21st?
Yep.
June 21st.
Exterior construction only, because, oh, well, I guess, then that's up for discussion. I'll amend the motion to be everything if people feel strongly that that's how it should be because it's an extension.
I don't, I don't even do our, any, any.
Yeah, okay, so we'll leave it at exterior.